Welcome this evening to the January 8th Board of Education meeting here in Red Canyon High School West. We'll call the meeting to order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the good world of which we have just as far as well. Thank you all for being here tonight. Happy New Year. Happy welcome back to school for all the kids here this week, right? Some of us with college students are still having a house full of kids at home. You can sympathize with me. No, it's wonderful. All right, so we have the approval of the consent agenda, which we made a slight change to our agenda. So I'm going to do this here to move to approve the consent agenda with the change to the agenda times and sequence of moving the executive session from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM this evening. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Any comments or questions? Why don't you say what, why that you're abstaining?
My wife is on the list of the personnel change, so I'm going to abstain from that.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Mr. Omanza.
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long has abstained. Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero, or six, one, sorry. Can't add.
All right, is anyone here this evening for public participation to speak at the blue cards?
The guy said, "You're supposed to speak?"
Yes, this is your time to do so, just. And I will read my special text. The public is invited to provide input at the board meeting and beginning of each meeting when related to an agenda item or any concern that they may have. If it's filling out a blue card, we'll fill it out when you're finished. There'll be a three-minute limit, please, and then understand that we're not engaging into a conversation this evening. We're just listening to what you have to say, incorporating it into our thoughts and our movements, and if you need an answer, we will get it by to you at a future time. I think you have heard that speech before.
I have heard that speech before. Hi.
Thank you for introducing yourself again.
My name is Eric Ripeth. I am a teacher at the Veil Ski and Snowboard Academy. I'm here representing residents of Malloy Park. I know that tonight is there is discussion about Malloy Park and the future of our homes. I just want to say that I'd like to thank the board for hearing our pleas last time and being empathetic to our needs. We're devoted employees for Eagle County School District. We would like to reiterate our plea for the recommendation to rescind the original eviction date and extend our stay until there's a concrete date when ground will break on the new housing units where our homes exist. We'd like to thank you for sharing your estimated timeline of steps that needed to be taken for the entire process. From the new timeline, it appears that more time is needed than previous estimation with the more out-of-date instead of June. It looks like it's going to be further than that. We want to make sure that with this transparent information given to us on the steps that are being accomplished, we'll be able to be aware of what is taking place and plan accordingly. We'd also like to make it clear that being in kind of limbo and not having a specific date for eviction is beneficial actually to us since it means that we can consistently keep paying on the houses that we still owe money to and that we live in and keep saving for new housing when the time comes. Sun or snow, school or break, it's never an easy time to move, but being able to live in our current housing is essential to the welfare of our families and our financial stability to keep living in the valley. Thank you guys again, and please consider the current residents in Malloy when you guys vote tonight to extend the time. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you all being here. We're just going to stick to our agenda this evening, though, and move forward. And so you've seen it, you know when your time is. Great, and that brings us to the report of the superintendent. Mr. Qualman?
So it's part of my report. Let's get plugged in here. All right, so I'll run through my report and then we'll get to the recognition. All right, superintendent's report. So we're coming off of a couple of weeks of vacation, so keep that in mind. I did get to spend some time with family and got on the mountain a few times, but I've also been continuing school visits. This is the mid-year check-in on how schools are doing, meeting with staff and teachers from every building. I've got three or four left to do and continuing to collect feedback. I was at Battle Mountain this morning, got some great information from them. And my least favorite meeting of the year, child fatality prevention team. Every year, if there is a youth who passes away in our community, we have to convene a meeting of public health officials, school officials, medical officials, coroner, try to understand and evaluate cause of death and figure out if there's anything that we can do to try to prevent these kinds of tragedies from happening in the future. Unfortunately, in 2019, we lost Megan Lodge, who was a student at Eagle Valley High School in a traffic accident, and it generated some intense reflection around what happened with that accident and what we might be able to do as a community to try to prevent further tragedies like that. In the last few weeks, I've also been engaging state lawmakers as it relates to the school finance formula. I appreciate Dan Doherty's help with that and liaising with the Veil Daily. I've spoken with our local legislators, Kerry Donovan and Roberts, and I also actually got a call from Julie McCluskey, who's a representative in Summit County, and my concern over some formula adjustments they were making and letters that I wrote to them, I think, hopefully caused some pause in what they were doing. I know the Veil Daily ran a couple of articles on that, but I don't think we're really out of the woods yet, so we need to be diligent watching what the legislature proposes as they convene, actually today is their first day in session, and there will be some, probably some independent legislators that pose some solutions for amending or changing the school finance formula. We need to be vigilant, watching for those and see how they impact us. The piece that's the target is the cost of living adjustment, and in a community like ours, it would be devastating. It would cost us over $3 million in revenue, so we've got to be really careful to watch how they try to make adjustments to that formula and advocate for our schools and Land resource and housing. We met this morning, but have been reviewing data from the Housing Survey for the last couple of weeks, so we've got some insights on that that we'll be bringing to you at our next meeting with the consultant that we hired to do that work, but it's a very dense, very rich resource, and I think it's going to help us develop a long-range plan for how we can budget for, strategically plan for, the housing needs that we need as an organization in the next decade. Eagle River Scholarship Fund. I serve on the board for this organization, and we are prepared now to bring this fund back to life. It actually started in the 1970s with revenue from the Gerald Ford Celebrity Golf Tournaments. So it's been a while, and it went on a bit of a hiatus for the last 10 to 15 years, but the money has been found, and we've got a new board in place, and we are prepared to start awarding scholarship funds starting in April of this spring, so excited to be a part of that. Eagle Valley Behavioral Health awarded some grants this quarter, and Eagle County Schools is a recipient of two, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge their support. They're providing us grants for Hope Squad. That's an initiative that Katie Jarno has been following, and it will train our students on how to be resources to their peers when they're feeling like they're having some challenges and they need some support. Teacher training is also supported, and this really is all about behavioral health. So what kind of training can we provide teachers outside of our regular class time, outside of our regular school contract time, to get them to be more prepared, more understanding about how to help students in issues related to behavioral health? So I really want to thank Eagle Valley Behavioral Health for their support of our school district. And finally, we finalized a partnership with Eagle County to provide a fourth SRO. That's the line that you can't see there below where it says "fourth." That's the School Resource Officer. So we started this partnership several years ago, and for many years, almost a decade, we had only two School Resource Officers that worked in our schools. This year, we added a third, and next year, we'll be adding a fourth. So that's a huge piece to serve as prevention in our schools for detrimental or risky behaviors, but it also is a huge support for a safe school climate, so we appreciate Eagle County for funding half of those new SROs, and we're providing the other half, so it's a great partnership to make our schools safer. That's it for me. So the last piece that I'd like to do, and you can see on our agenda here, is School Board Recognition Month. So there's a couple of ways we could have handled this. We could have had you pass your own proclamation honoring yourself, but thought that was awkward. So instead, I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the work that you do. Serving on the school board takes a lot of time, and it's not a paid position. You guys are volunteering for this work. It takes an immense amount of learning to understand all the ins and outs of a school district and time. I mean, the time that it takes to read board packets every month, to visit schools, to open your ears and your heart to our students and our parents is very time-consuming, and it's a commitment, and we appreciate you giving of your time and your families supporting you to do this work. So the proclamation that's in here really is just to say that we honor your work and we appreciate your commitment to the students, the teachers of this community. And as a small token of our appreciation, we've got a little gift, and we'll pass these out. Take one and pass it down. And you better take these with you because they've been highly coveted by the district office staff, and if there are any left behind, we will certainly find somebody who wants them. There you go. So thank you very much for your time and your commitment to us, and give you a little round of applause. Thank you very much. Madam President, back to you.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and we appreciate all the work that gets done by all of you here and your time hanging out with us on these bi-monthly meetings. So board reports. Shall we start with you, Michelle?
Sure. Definitely enjoyed the break with my young children and all of their time off school. One of our new personal ventures that relates to just community partnerships is they joined 4H, so we got to experience Clover Buds, which is their youngest program offering. Monday night, they got to meet some older students that are raising bunnies and learn all about caring for them. Phil reminded me of a couple of other things I've been up to. I did attend the Child Fatality Committee meeting with him, which was pretty tough. While I get to work with a lot of those community partners, I'm not often in the same room with folks from the coroner's office, so that was different and tough. There's been a group that's gotten together after the passing of Paul Cuthbertson to put together a foundation that his family is helping bin lead, and I'm joining on their board. And so got to spend some of my time over the holidays reviewing some really amazing applications. There were over 20 applications from young people, many in our community, many of them are students, talking about their passions and how some help on the resources and would really support them, so looking forward to helping to start, give some of those funds away in the coming weeks. Also been pretty involved with Eagle Valley Behavioral Health. I actually spent the entire day yesterday at their kickoff retreat with folks from Veil Health and their board and community partners, talking about some of the ambitious plans behind the fundraising goals and just increasing supports and efficiency of systems around behavioral health in the community. And then one other piece that I wanted to mention, I've been pretty involved here in the past two years or so with some of the tobacco law changes, especially increasing the minimum age from 18 to 21 in a couple of our towns, and it did not get a lot of headlines in our news, but on December 20th from the federal level, there's been some changes to increase the minimum age to purchase tobacco and vaping products from 18 to 21. So that's really huge news for our community and our state and our country and the health of our kids. Thanks.
Well, I attended my first land resource and use committee meeting this morning, so I'm getting up to speed on that, and Phil mentioned a little bit about this already, but basically, we are starting to go over the guts of the Employee Housing Need Survey, and there were 700 employees that participated in that survey, and there is a lot, a lot of great information there, and I think it's going to be really useful in helping us form a plan, you know, a long-term goal to try to work out the issue of housing in our community. And so we sort of spent some time going through all different parcels and looking at options, and I'm really excited to sort of see what comes. I think there'll be a lot, a lot of great work happening in the next few months and the next year in terms of the long-term planning. Obviously, Malloy Park is a piece of that, so it was nice to get up to speed on that, and I really enjoyed it. Thanks.
Ted, we'll jump over to you.
Most people don't know, I work at Colorado Mountain College, and in November is the time I go to do my visits to the high schools to do the observations of teachers who are teaching dual enrollment classes. So at the, at CMC, I'm over business, math, science, automotive, and outdoor programs, so any dual enrollment classes at the high schools, I usually supply those teachers, and then I make sure I do the classroom observations for them. And in November, I was at VSSA, and I was at Eagle Valley High School, and I was at Battle Mountain High School, and I'm thrilled at what's happening in the classrooms. And I was a full-time faculty member at a college myself, and I can, I have a good sense of when good things are happening in the classroom, and each one of these high schools does it in a very different way, but there's quality, quality instruction happening, not just in the dual enrollment classes, but you can tell when students are engaged, and students are engaged, and it's exciting to watch the dual enrollment programs grow at each of those schools, and I think that's a, that's a fine testimony to what's happening in collaboration with all the schools and all the other educational institutions. I did spend a pretty brief time at the teacher holiday party at Battle Mountain High School. It was at the Eagle Vale Pavilion, and I got, I got invited because my wife is a paris support instructor at Battle Mountain, and it was a very interesting time. There's a lot of, a lot of adult beverages being served, and I realized when I came in, there were a couple of people who knew, Rob, Rob knew that I was on the board, and then I think Jason knew as well, but there, I didn't think of myself as a board member when I walked in, and all of a sudden, it was like, oh, no, you know, Dad's here, we can't drink, you know? That's the kind of way I felt, but after just talking with people and things like that, I think it was, it was a good, good time. I would like to try to see if we can upgrade their catering for next year. I think it was a little, seemed a little, a little weak to me. The other thing I've been doing on the board is I really, I'm on the Finance Committee, and I really, really, really want to do what I can to try to improve the formula, try to improve getting our, you know, the salary where it needs to be and any other incentives that we can, that we can give our educators. I know it's a sticking point, and I want to be prepared for that, so I've been digging into a lot of those Finance Formula documents, get updates, and I'm trying to get prepared for the Denver meeting and, at the end of February, to, for the Finance Committee for the school, so thank you.
Okay, so before the break, I was able to take my kids to the Homestead Peak musical, Shrek, and wow. I wish every school could have that type of program. It was, I mean, it was insane. We loved it, the kids loved it, I loved it, just to see the commitment of the parents volunteering. I was just blown away, it was amazing. And then I spent quite some time at Eagle Valley Elementary because my kids go there, so I've been spending time in the classrooms, doing Spanish reading and helping, and that's it.
All right, so over the weekend, or not the weekend, last year, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, that sounds better. I had some family come over from Mexico, and they came here last winter, they were very excited about the snow, and I'm like, no, I'm going to take you somewhere where there's really a lot of snow. So I took them snowmobiling up flops and then took some pictures. They had a blast, and then they couldn't believe how much snow there was, so I was like, let's go to the Iron Springs in Glenwood, is that what it's called? And it started snowing, so it was just mind-blowing for everyone. I had a blast, but then started the year strongly. First, I taught my first maturation class to seven graders yesterday. We might have gotten in trouble a little bit, being too loud, but I taught it at Homestead Peak School, and it was a blast. I enjoyed it quite a bit, so I'm waiting for that feedback. Also, went to the Body Mentor Holiday Party, and it was just amazing. We did some ice skating and had dinner, enjoyed with my buddy, and it was just insane, it was awesome. Then we're moving on to Phase Four and Five on CTC, Communities That Care, and looking forward to implementing a lot of those surveys, the hard work that my partners have been doing, so thank you all for, for your support on that. Same goes with the No DUI Strain Committee with Hillary Higgins. We're going to start working on those classes that we're going to be teaching, just as we did last year into the schools, so I'm very excited for that. And then, speaking of Eagle Valley Behavioral Health, partnering with Heart's Rain, Los Corazones Reinan, and Sonia Mejia, and we're moving on forward to, it's a new company we're, we're working on, and it's basically we're bringing on the mental health part of it to our non-English-speaking community, and we're going to focus a lot on youth, but adults as well. And with that said, I just finished up two radio interviews for the Spanish radio station here, La Noa Mix, which's 102.5, and I believe they both come out either this Friday or the next one, so if anyone's interested, I will be teaching a mental health first aid class in Gypsum on the 18th. Yes, so very excited about that. If anyone would like to join me, please RSVP. And then I did go to the Head Start meeting. Shelley leave? She did leave. It was insane, it was pretty awesome. I'm very excited to work with Head Starters, a few things that we, I have to personally work on in reference to the schedule, but hopefully that way I can take over from Shelley next school year, and I think that's about it. Thanks.
Well, I, at the urging of Tessa Kirchner, I applied to be the CASB Board Region Eight Representative and was appointed to that role, so I'm excited to take on that work. I also attended DAC. We heard from all four Down Valley Elementary Schools. I was at the Veil Health event where Fernando and Michelle were also there. Were you there? And so, behavioral, well, it's an event that always is held by Veil Health, but with their new focus on behavioral health, that was really the focus of this year's event, and they announced the $15 million donation from Jay and Molly Precourt and also their daughter Amanda Precourt, and Amanda spoke, and it was very moving, and I think one of the things that stood out to me the most is just how far we had come in about, they kept saying, two years, so in a very short period of time, I feel like we've made great strides and have great plans in place to make even greater strides, so I think that's, you know, we've seen it in our schools and we hear it over and over when we hear our school presentations about the difference that having counselors in every school is making, so I appreciate all the different entities that are working on that effort. I also this week attended Battle Mountain High School's School Accountability, where we heard from the Assistant Principal, Maxine Cordova, about her role, and also from Dr. Miguel Salinas, who just received his doctorate in December, and he leads up the teacher leadership as a strategy lead, and so he sort of talked about each of the teachers' roles that have leadership positions. And then this morning, I was at the Land Resource Committee meeting that Phil and Kelly were at also, so that's it.
Great, thanks everybody for all the work. Just quickly went back through my notes, and Fernando missed the, on December 17th, we were at Red Canyon High School for their staff meeting, and on Monday, I have the last staff meeting, which I think is, I'm not sure who's my wingman on that one, but we'll be doing the debrief on those at the next January meeting, which brings us into old and new business. I guess the rest of the vacation, I've just been dutifully supporting my family through the holidays and cooking and cleaning and having a lot of love around the house. It's always nice. For the next meeting, we're going to do some pre-planning for negotiations in an executive session, according to statute, and a finance overview. Has everyone checked their calendar about this? We were hoping to start the meeting earlier for just the new members or for everybody?
For the new members, and if you two veteran members want to attend as well, you're welcome to, but I'll post it as a meeting.
Okay, and you've checked in?
I did.
So that'd be great to get that little extra bit of training done. That's an important part of our job here, is overseeing the finances. We'll do the debrief of the staff meetings, as I said. We'd like to take some time to do a board self-evaluation, just as a nice time to check in on how we're working together, and this will be especially important as we're all learning each other's styles and we can become the strongest team we can. And then there's more land information, land development at Battle Mountain High School, and then some stock takes for, what have we got? English language acquisition and multilingual education, and then, as we always do, in the middle of our fiscal year, we need to revise the budget to closer to a little bit of how things are going, right? And then the final update on the bond, getting close to spending all that money, getting it into schools where it belongs, and then some governance policies as usual for our policy governance board. Is there anything else, any questions we want to ask before this so that staff has time to prepare, or any items that we want to get on the agenda? Old and sort of new business type thing?
Do we have it on our radar to get an update on how the youth equity stewardship is going? It's, everything that we hear seems really positive, and it'd be great to hear a little more.
They have a meeting in this room tomorrow, so we can get that on the agenda. We can have Mary Anne Stavany come in and share with you how that's going.
That'd be great.
Dr. Long and I have also spoken about our curriculum adoption process. There are some revisions, I think, that we need to make to that policy, and it's such a foundational piece of what we do as an organization, that we thought it would be wise for all the board members to stay informed about the changes that we're recommending to that, so we'll, we'll add that to an upcoming meeting as well. We'll have Renee Westonfelder come in as curriculum coordinator and fill you guys in on what we're trying to do.
Will that be something that we're ready for next meeting or maybe in two meetings?
Let me talk to Katie about that, probably a couple of meetings down the road.
Couple of meetings down the road, so that's sort of in the near future, but we'll get-
We're in the midst of some work. I think it would be good to kind of get through some of that before we report out.
Yes, great, thank you. Just let us know when we'll be ready for that, and we can probably get that youth equity stewardship update, though, on the 22nd. Anything else? Excellent. All right, Mr. Hill, that brings us to you. Veil Ski and Snowboard Academy, yeah, come right up on there, why not?
We have them. We'll just see them on our computers.
Oh, do we want to, do we need to put them up? I'll let you do this, Bill.
Okay. Good evening, board members. I'm Wade Hill, principal of Veil Ski and Snowboard Academy. Nice to see you again. I'm in front of you tonight to ask for approval on the 2021 and 2122 calendar for Veil Ski and Snowboard Academy. We work with a committee team at our school. The team is built with one parent representative from each of our sport disciplines, myself, two of our teachers, and two of the board members from SSCV. The calendar has been built by the school district for the next two years, so we worked to get in alignment with that and get ours for two years. So I have two years of calendars here in front of you. At Veil Ski and Snowboard Academy, we made some minor adjustments, but generally, this calendar is quite in line with the Eagle County School District calendar. To walk you through just a couple of the changes that we would like to propose, we have several athletes that are in Southern Hemisphere camps early in the year. We would like to start our year two days later, and that would allow them to have a full two and a half weeks down south before they come back. It's about 70 to 80 kids, so we have a significant number of kids that would miss the first couple of days of school, so we made an adjustment there. We pay for that by not taking the entire week off in October. We scaled that down to three days. We scaled that down to three days. Our athletes have a very competitive March, so we wanted to maintain a little bit of a break there and expand that a little bit. So, what we've asked is could we move our professional development half day in January to March? All of this has been vetted through MARTA Ellsworth in terms of count days and there's an equitable balance of professional development and teacher work time built into these calendars that is equal to Eagle County School District calendars. So, we found that about 50 of our families have children in our school and in other schools. So, as our committee got together, we've really built a calendar that is pretty closely aligned to the Eagle County School District calendar. So, it's some minor changes, but we would ask for your approval for 2021 and 2122. Can I answer any questions about the changes and what we've proposed to do?
Has there been any concerns raised by any of the administration that you've vetted it through? You've vetted it through HR and you've vetted it through MARTA and-
Yes. I work with Adele on this and have presented the ideas of we would maintain that half-day professional development and half-day workday. We're just moving it, that's an in-building professional development day, so we maintain the same structure and it is identical to the district calendar. We just move it to March. We don't get the full October break. We get the three days there, but in starting two days later, our teachers generally report two days later in August, but we can adjust that out so that they're still involved in all of the district's professional development days. So, if you look at those days, that aligns. Teachers report on the 10th, but with the 12th, we can still maintain the Battle Mountain or Eagle Valley full day of professional development is identical there and so I can make sure our staff have access to all of the district professional development.
Are the students gonna be doing this like in perpetuity or do you-
You know, it depends. I think our start date has varied a little bit and when the kids start around the 19th or 20th, we can work within that. So, it just kind of depends on when the first day of school was. So, with the 17th, you know, I know it seems tough skiing in the Southern Hemisphere, but there's not a great snow and there's not great snow. And the more you can push that to get into August, the better the opportunity for the ski, you know, kids on the slopes. So, that has been a tight window there. By moving it back, it just helps accommodate that a little bit better.
Well, and the ski academy does a real nice job with one of their unique things with the small size of the school is they have all-school wilderness trip for the different grades. And so, ensuring that everyone's back ensures higher participation in that.
Definitely. We've moved that to a week later. That is usually the first, the first day is a welcome back and then the 20th and 21st, we dive right into our wilderness trip. In working through with staff, we're gonna move that one week later. We think we can work within that and still make that a great-
That's what those purple days are?
Those are those purple days there, the 27th and 28th.
Oh, great. Then you really will have all kids back.
Yes. That's our hope. We always lose 10 to 15 kids on those trips, so it's a really important team-building day for us and, you know, a great time for kids to get to know each other outside of a classroom setting. So, we, by moving it a week later, we think we'll get more of the kids there.
Any other comments?
You can see 2122 follows the exact same model, just with the shift of a day, so.
So, we need a motion?
Move to approve the calendar of 2021 or 2020 and 2021, 2021 and 2022 school year for Vail Ski and Snowboard Academy is presented.
I'll second.
Are there any further comments or discussion?
Okay. Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Too many whites on. Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for your time and for your support of Vail Ski and Snowboard Academy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wade.
Thank you, Wade. All right. Parent portal demo. Ta-da, ta-da. We're gonna hopefully make a lot of people happy with this progress.
Well, these guys get connected. I'll give you a little background on the why for this presentation. We're trying to get parents engaged in a lot of different aspects of the children's education. That usually involves several different website access to see what's happening. So, some examples that you're probably familiar with, Power School. So, if you want to know about your students' grades and attendance. Naviance, if you want to know about your school's progress towards developing ICAP. Then there's the transportation website to understand about bus routes and timing. And then, there's the school, there's the cafe for lunch fees. So, there's all kinds of different ways that parents can get engaged and follow what's happening with their students. But it also means you gotta be very technically savvy to manage all those different websites. So, we're trying to come up with a solution to help parents manage all those different logins and make it more efficient and convenient for them to stay engaged electronically. So, with that, I'll turn it over to these guys.
Good evening, board members. I'm Todd Shahan, the Chief Technology Officer for the school district. And with me is Jason Butters. He is the Manager of Operations and Applications. And as Phil mentioned, this is an exciting addition to our systems that hopefully will help a lot of parents be more engaged and make their lives a little simpler. This has been requested by parents and teachers and administrators to have a tool like this available. And so, we're excited. Interesting enough, we reached out to quite a few school districts and very few school districts that we were able to talk to have something like this. And to me, it seems like kind of a no-brainer. But, so, it was a new development with a team that we have that developed the portal that all of our staff and students use currently. Then we just created a parent portal that's very similar. And I think that's gonna be advantageous for the, from the support side of it, for our team to support it as well as our teachers and staff that are already comfortable with the interface and knowing what it looks like. This is very similar and they'll be able to explain and help parents as they navigate through it. So, I'm gonna have Jason kind of show you a little bit about how it works and then we'll take some questions.
So, the main goal is to make this very easy for the parents to set up and use. And so, basically, without having, we could just send out instruction, not to send out any codes, but a parent, after they've registered their student or their child, they could just register, just have to know their primary phone number, their email that they registered with, and the oldest child in our school system's date of birth. And with those three pieces of information, which they all should know, they click, enter all that stuff, click next, and then it presents them with, setting up their password and then also tells them what their G number is, so guardian number. So, we, all staff have an E number, all students have an S number, and we're gonna have guardians have a G number. And so, once they go through this step, they just can have it with the sheet of instructions and should be able to complete all that. And it tells them what their username is and then they should know their password. And they could do the whole reset process using their email once they set that up. Once that's set up, it's the same system that all of our students use and all of our staff use. And they just go to login.eagleschool.net and log in. And so, it's just gonna present, we can customize this to be just for the parents. And so, as you see here, this is just a set of links that we've set up for Power School, Smart Tags, the transportation system. Here's the website. They can do a Safe to Tell, Info Update, or our online registration. And then, My School Bucks, which is, can be used to buy stuff through schools and then school cafes for the funding, the lunch account and also their lunch account and also applying for free reduced lunch. Another piece of this is they can come over here and click on the applications and switch over to people and they could show, it'll show them their children. This is actually my kid. I'm not gonna click on it because it's gonna put my kids up there, but it would show the parent, their kids, their email address, their student number, what school they're at, and the information we have about that. So, if they need that information to set up other accounts and they can have that right very accessible. And we can customize this and add more sites to this. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Is there any questions or comments?
There's a way you can measure how useful it is or how many people are logging in and all that stuff. I'm, in Edwards, I'm, my concern isn't that they, I don't think they necessarily need an easier way to do it, although that's great that you do it. I think they just lack the access or the, they may not own a computer, you know?
Well, and this is, it's a dynamic site, so it can be done through a phone or anything like that. So, they can manage that through, it's a very mobile-friendly site and so they could do it through that. But, yeah, and the idea is that it's not just gonna be just a set of links. Our end goal is that we can do single sign-ons, so they may not have to have information, like our first targets can be Power School. So, once they create this account, and some of it's a limitation on some of these targets, but like with Power School, we should be able to, as a Phase Two, auto-create the accounts here. If the parent has an account, then auto-create them in these Power School and the transportation and the food service ones. So, they don't have to know any other passwords. They just have to know this one account and then single-sign them into these other ones. And that's our end goal. We have to work through all the details for each one of those specific vendors, but that's my big goal.
Yeah. Ultimately, we want them to just have one username, one password, and access all their stuff. As you can imagine, with all the different vendors and products that we have, that's not always easy to do, but that's our end goal, that we want to have them be able to do that. And we needed a product that was pretty self-sufficient for them to set up their own account and manage their own account so that our team wouldn't have to manage, just adds another 8,000 to 10,000 accounts immediately for us to manage if we were to have to figure out everybody's username and password for them and all that. So, that was the goal, is really where a parent can just get in there. Once they've registered a student, it's taking that information out of the registration system and creating those and generating that account and then they can go claim that account, that's what it's called. And then, there, like I said, we hopefully will have no involvement in that process. They can do it themselves. Now, if they do need support, we'll be training our staff as well as the school office staff to how to help them reset their password if need and some of that, if they can't do it on their own.
Yep. And that's, we've heard that come up a couple of different times.
Yeah, that came up the other day, actually, yeah.
And that'd be another one that we would add to this list of apps, for sure. That's definitely one that we'd add in there.
Yeah. And I'm sure it's gonna grow of a lot of different things. You know, we're trying to hit the high points at this stage. So, and that kind of brings me to the, kind of the rollout of this. Our plan right now is in the spring is we're gonna be piloting this with one or two schools, just to try it out, see how it works, tell us what parents get stumbled on, you know, what things are confusing to them, what are things we do need to add, things that we didn't think about. And then, hopefully, a full rollout in the fall. Is our timing on this.
And so, right now, when you click on Power School, will you have to sign in again to Power School, but eventually, it'll just take there?
Correct. Yes. Yep.
So, but the goal is to eliminate this next screen?
Yep.
Exactly.
For all of those systems that we can. And again, it, there's a lot of technical mumbo jumbo that goes with it, but if they have a certain type of login and security that they use in their system, then we can pass that on, like I said, from our login, our initial login, then we can pass that information from system to system and then they don't have to put another password in there. But the first goal is just really give them one place to get most of the stuff. Because like I said, it's, there's different places to go hunting down, oh, how do I get into Power School or where do I go for school cafe? Where do I go for these things? And so, I think that's a good step forward in the right direction. And another thing that we're working on as well is getting a lot of these labels in Spanish and in English. And so, we're evaluating whether we'll do a completely Spanish version or we'll do one that has both labels. And so, it might say username and then whatever the Spanish equivalent of that, so that it's my window system as well.
Thanks for that. I think that's an amazing and a great way for you guys to think about the parents and finding a way to make it easier for them to access their, all the programs and just in general, creating just one account and making it accessible. I do have a question and probably I'm just thinking too far ahead, but how are the parents gonna be notified and trained to use that?
So, we'll be doing some flyers that will get the help of the schools to distribute when it's up and ready for them to do it. That'll be part of our process with the pilot. So, they can send it home and say, hey, now we have this parent portal. Here's how you go in and sign in. Here's, you know, the link you need to go to and give them some basic introduction to that. And I think that we'll probably want to visit with the schools and see if that's part of their, every year, part of their packet of what they send home with parents. We'll need the schools' help and assistance in getting that word out there.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any more questions about this? We look forward to further updates in the future as we move along with this and we appreciate you trying to make life simpler for parents.
Thank you.
So, we have another information item of the pathways, customized pathways, stock take with Dr. Jarno.
This is one of my favorite presentations that I get to do because it is about our customized pathways, which is part of our MTSS process in order to meet the diverse needs of our students. So, creating different pathways for students, PK through 12, but a lot of the emphasis, as you'll see in the presentation, is really on the high school. So, some of the problems that, I wouldn't say problems because I feel like we have an incredibly robust system with our pathways. So, I'd say some of our challenges or some of the reasons why we're doing this work is to provide some robust college and career guidance opportunities, to provide options for students, including dual enrollment and advanced placement, creating school climates where all students can learn and grow, no matter what their plans, post-high school, and to support the school district equity work by continuing to grow our AVID programming, by continuing to improve our DE and AP offerings. And so, it supports all of those pieces. The objective is if we provide all students access to individualized learning opportunities and college and career guidance, then students will customize pathways to meet personal and professional goals. There isn't just one way to get through to post-high school life anymore. So, understanding our pathways. So, the link that is on this slide in your packets takes you to the pathway guide. Obviously, I couldn't put that whole thing on here, but we are currently revising this guide to bring it up to date. We started it a few years ago. James Thompson has been a huge part of that. But it includes all of the pieces of our pathways, including academic planning, Naviance, information about dual enrollment, Career X, Career Y's, all of that information. One of the, I just met with Jim this morning to take a look at where we're going with this. And one of the things that we found we don't really have in here are military options and information about that. And so, we felt like that was something we probably needed to add in. This is just an example, some examples of what's in the guide. One of the pieces that I think is really important, and again, it will look very different in the new plan, but it really talks through each of the activities and it really begins in sixth grade. There is some work that's done before then. But in terms of planning for the future, starting in sixth grade through 12th grade, all of the steps that kids go through and all the opportunities that we have for them to think about their futures. And then, we also have a lot of different ways to earn high school credit. And you'll see that in some of the survey results when I get to that piece. As far as the data that we have for this, so, we have this senior exit survey. We've done it two years now. And the first year we did it in 2018, Battle Mountain High School did not fully participate. There were only about 50 responses from them. And last year, Eagle Valley High School did not properly participate. And I take responsibility for that. I assumed, because I didn't hear anything from Eagle Valley High School, that all was well because they had completed it just beautifully the year before. So, that was not a very good assumption on my part. As it turns out, they did their own survey last year. They didn't realize, I guess, that there was a miscommunication, that no, this is the district survey that we want to have all four of our high schools participate in. Red Canyon and VSSA have been doing what they're supposed to do all along. Bless them. So, I, we didn't know until it was too late. We didn't get the results until August. And when we got the results in August and there were no results for Eagle Valley High School, we went, excuse me, what's going on here? So, that's what happened. And I do have, I just this morning got the results of the survey that Eagle Valley High School did do, that they made up on their own. Some of the information is similar, but it's not the same survey. So, it's just not possible to compare. So, what I've done is, you'll see I've taken the Battle Mountain answers from 2018 and the Eagle Valley answers from 2019 and we can look at those. I promise you that this year, we will get that sorted out. So, I ask you to take a lesson from Cameron in Ferris Bueller's Day Off when they went to the museum. You remember that scene? And he got real up close and there's one little dot, but when you back off- dot, but when you back off, you see the whole picture in an impressionist painting, and so we're really looking at the whole picture, and the exit surveys are really one little dot on that picture. But that was definitely disappointing that that happened. So when we look at the senior exit surveys, I'm just offering a few of the questions, and I can certainly get you those full results if you like, but were you able to customize your learning pathway? And they, you know, it's a scale from excellent to needs improvement, and then a couple of not applicable. I'm not sure how this is not applicable to everyone, but at any rate. And again, these are from two different years, so we really can't pick out any trends or anything here, but I think it shows us that, you know, where we're at in at least providing, if you look at the average or above, we're in a pretty good place with our pathways. In comparison with other districts, just in some of the conferences that I've been to and conversations that I've had, I think we're in a really good place. We offer quite a lot more than a lot of districts in our surrounding areas. The next question was, what do you plan to pursue immediately after high school? What I found interesting about this was that the top numbers are from the exit survey, the bottom numbers are what the state reports on our matriculation, and that is from 2017 graduates, so it's not really reflected in the numbers above, but the differences were pretty profound, and especially when it comes to attending a two-year college. And so that's something I want to look into. I have a call-in to the state to find out, what are they looking at, and is what they're considering a two-year college different from what we are? Because we want to make that specific on this survey, so that it gives us a way to predict what we're going to see on our school performance frameworks. Another piece that we look at are the CareerX opportunities, and overall, we have, you know, better than 40%, almost 50% of our students are participating in one or more CareerX opportunities, which is a pretty good number. Those opportunities include job shadows, internships, work studies, and apprenticeships. Our apprenticeship program, which is our CareerWise program, is definitely growing. We're still experiencing some bumps. And again, as I mentioned last year, we're one of the only rural school districts that participates in CareerWise, and so as a smaller district, it was really developed for large urban districts like DPS. And so in a smaller district, we have more challenges than they would in a larger district. We have challenges with scheduling kids, with making sure that they are, because they are taking time out of school to do a paid apprenticeship, but they still have to get their school requirements in in order to graduate, and so balancing that with tighter schedules in a smaller system is difficult. We also have some challenges, and particularly for next year, we're finding this, in that most of our business is located up-valley, and so that provides some challenges for Eagle Valley High School students in terms of transportation, in terms of the time that it takes to get there. So that's something that I'm talking with Eric Williams at Vale Valley Partnership on when we're recruiting businesses. I think we need to make a more concerted effort to look for opportunities in the down-valley When we look at our advanced placement and DE, this is a slide that I took directly from our academic indicators, and so this is not meant to compare advanced placement and dual enrollment. We've had a lot of questions about this, because on the DE success portion, we're looking at a B or better, and on the AP version, we're looking at a three or better. So a three on an AP exam is a success, it's getting kids the credit that they need in the institutions that are accepting that. There are some colleges that won't accept below a four, but for the most part, a three is acceptable. And Phil and I talked a lot about the DE, and Melissa as well, the DE piece. Should we be using a C or better, since that is a little bit more equivalent to an AP3? But when we created this, we were looking at, what does success really mean? And I think we all felt that we wanted to set the bar a little bit higher, and so success in a DE class, you can get credit with a C, but a C is essentially, in a grading system, is average. That's, you know, the middle of the curve. And so we wanted success to be represented by something a little bit higher than that. And so we went with the B. However, comma, I think at the end of this year, I think that we should also gather information on C and above, so that we really can compare those two things a little more As far as our milestones, we've really increased our use of NAVIANCE. It used to just be a survey that kids took, but again, Jim Thompson has done an amazing job working with our school counselors and with the folks at NAVIANCE. We've kind of set a minimum of what kids need to be doing at each grade level, and then we have some options beyond that. And so we have some schools and some counselors who are really getting into that, and doing more of the curriculum beyond just taking an inventory of aptitudes or that sort of thing. So it's not just a survey anymore, we do have some resources that go with it, and where kids, the lessons are really going beyond just what are your interests and what do you think you're going to do in the future. CareerX and CareerWise just continue to grow, which is great. I had the opportunity to go on a CareerX job shadow at the HATs installation at the airport last fall, that was a ton of fun. Turns out, I am not tall enough to operate a Blackhawk helicopter. I could do it with big giant heels, which I had on, but they informed me that the military would not approve of that, so, not a helicopter pilot, not in my future. Early College High School is continuing, we are still waiting for our official approval from the state, that is supposed to come sometime in January, but all of our indications were that we will be approved to reauthorize that. However, that will look a little bit different in terms of the cohort of students that we had, have, and the number of kids that are really able to get that fifth and sixth year after high school. And so we, we're going to continue on with it, but I think that we may find that the juice may not be worth the squeeze on that. And if we really are looking at, because our DE and AP offerings are so robust, we have kids who are getting their associate's degree in four years with or without the early college high school system, and in order to get that fifth and sixth year, we really might, we want to be looking at the PTEC options. So we're going to be looking for, at applying for PTEC again for next year, which would go into effect in the 21-22 school year. And then the CE expansion grant that I applied for in November is to support teachers who are working on being credentialed in order to teach DE classes. We were at first turned down for that, but we, I got information over the break that it looks like we will be getting some money. I have not notified those teachers yet, so if you're watching tonight, I'll be in touch, I promise. I'm waiting to find out exactly how much money that we'll have, but we have at least four teachers who are taking master's level classes, and we'll be able to offer them at least some support with their tuition for that. So that was an exciting development, and I should know tomorrow, fingers crossed, what we're actually getting for that. Our vision, this is kind of a little history lesson, starting back in 2002-ish, we don't have really good records on exactly when this all happened, so it was kind of Phil and some other folks around the district and I putting together these dates. But starting with our dual enrollment and advanced placement, advanced placement has been in place forever. I took that at Battle Mountain when I graduated back in the last century, literally. And dual enrollment started around 2002. We brought AVID into the district in about 2010. CareerX started up in 2015. Early College High School started in 2016, and then our Seal of Bilitracy, another one of our past pathways in 2017. So that was a, that was a really interesting exercise for me, to kind of go back through the history and see, when did all of this happen? Like I said before, you know, part of the reason that we didn't get, weren't awarded the CE expansion grant to begin with is because our dual enrollment program is really robust in comparison with a lot of other districts in the state. I think we have a lot to be really proud of. When I've attended meetings at the state level on, you know, career and college readiness and our programming, we're doing really well, and we have a lot to celebrate. We can always get better, and we can always continue to grow. I do think, however, that also in a district our size, there will come a point where we sort of meet the maximum growth. We have a limited number of students, we have a lot of different options. We can't expect that, you know, CareerWise, it's growing, but we can't expect that it's going to continue to grow forever and ever, and 100% of kids are going to be a part of it. We have a lot of different offerings and a lot of different pathways, and so I feel like we're on a good track, and we shouldn't be disappointed if in the next few years we see that, well, we're not still growing. That's because we're at capacity, and that's a great thing to celebrate as well. So I just kind of throw that out there, so that when I come back next year, and it doesn't look as if maybe something has grown hugely, that would be why. So, we're doing well. Any questions, thoughts, comments?
Like, the approximate number of kids that participate in CareerX or CareerWise?
In CareerWise, we have, I want to say, 16 apprenticeships currently, and that has grown quite a lot, that we started off with just a couple. And CareerX, I don't know the exact number, but we have at least, I would say, a couple of hundred kids who are participating in those job shadows. I can get those numbers from Amanda Spannagel. But that, CareerX in particular, the job shadows and the internships have grown exponentially over the last several years, and also grown in terms of where we do those career, those job shadows. So we're doing a lot here in the valley with Vale Health and with HATs. She's also taking kids to the Aveda Institute in Denver. She took a trip to Grand Junction to a technology facility, and so we're also expanding geographically where we take kids and the different kinds of things that we take kids to. So, that's nice as well. And it's amazing to me what they get to do on those job shadows. I mean, we were all over those helicopters. We got to like climb in and out and do whatever we wanted, and when they, they go to Vale Health, they're like literally learning how to like start IVs, and I'm not going on that one, because that's not my thing, but the helicopters were cool. So it's also what they're doing in the job shadows, and as they go back year after year, and we build relationships with those businesses, I think that the programming that they offer us gets better and better as well, so.
Is there any sort of way that the students that are participating in some of these more intensive pathways are getting to showcase like, kind of like a capstone presentation or anything like that? I'd love to see if there was any sort of a summary of their accomplishments or...
There is. We haven't done that in a public way, but for, as part of the internships and the apprenticeships, when they're, they're actually getting credit for those, there is sort of a capstone that goes along with that, where they have to kind of summarize their experience and talk about what they've learned. So, yes, in the Seal of Bilitracy, that is a huge part of that award, and that pathway is doing a, sort of a panel presentation and discussion at the end of it, an example at the end of it. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your service to the students and for that update. All right. Now, what we've all been waiting for, we'll move on to the Malloy Park housing timeline and recommendation from the Land Resource Committee for employees, and I have Sandy Muchler here to get us started.
All right, good evening. So this is just another follow-up on the, talking, the conversation about the residents that live out at Malloy Park. And as we discussed before, we had the Land Resource Committee meeting this morning and shared some information with them, as well as this potential project timeline that's not showing up there, but you guys all have it in your packet?
Sure does.
Okay. So since the last meeting, we've spent some time putting together the timeline to make sure that we could clearly show you the impact of what was happening and the extension of doing the survey and all of that. And that was followed up also by a meeting with the employee, employees out at Malloy Park, and you've heard some of them talk tonight about their wish to not have to have that specific move in the summer or anything like that. So really looking at letting them stay out there for as long as possible before development. So in meeting with the Land Resource Committee today, we have consensus and recommendation to rescind the notice to vacate, and just wait until we get six to nine months from the development of Malloy Park. So that would coincide about the time that we have the final development and are putting it into the Town of Mintern for their approval, and that process is the process that will take six to nine months before we could break ground. So, we wanted to come tonight and ask the board to approve that and look at rescinding that, vacating the property notice. Happy to answer any questions you have about that.
So, if we tell them, okay, let's say it took eight months to get the approval, if we tell them at the start of that, can they live there until essentially two months before we break, I mean...
So what would happen is once, we still have a lot of processes to go through, so as we define and finalize the development, there's a process that you actually will have to go before the Town of Mintern to get their approval on that process, and it takes them six to nine months to do that.
Right. But can they live there that whole time while they're doing that process?
Yes. So we would give the notice then approximately around the time that we submitted to the Town of Mintern, and then while they're going through that process, that would be that six-month timeframe. So legally, we're still required to give the six-month notice, but we would anticipate that we could work through the Town of Mintern's process within their designated timeframe, so we'd be ending that all about the same time.
And just to confirm, if we move to rescind the notice to vacate tonight, we don't have to declare another date at this point, right?
Correct. So that was part of it, the last conversation of, do we extend three months, six months, do we extend a year? So if we just completely rescind it and then just wait until we're ready to break ground and actually submit to the Town of Mintern, then that gives them that information. The difficult part for the employees that live out there is just kind of that unknowing and waiting for when that is, but we'll continue to keep them updated on our process and where we are in the planning for the development, and then be able to give them the six-month notice. And that was something that was clarified to me at the last meeting, too, was their preference would be to stay out there until the very last minute, instead of trying to schedule it at a specific time that didn't happen in the winters, type of thing.
So, when it gets submitted to the Town of Mintern, you said that it takes six to ni, or six to eight months to get it approved, correct?
Yes.
So if they take six months, or they take the whole eight months, those two extra months, what happens? Is they, they just stay there for those extra two months?
We would set the date at the six months and then expect them to vacate at that time period. If during the development process, if we see that being delayed longer than that, we could always come back and have an additional conversation to extend it, but the initial piece would be to set the six month at that timeframe. We would hope to not keep extending and extending, but if we ran into some kind of snag with the town and we were having difficulty getting it approved in time, then we definitely could come back again and ask for an extension. We always just have to have six months from the last time we give them notice.
All right, and looking at this schedule here, it's sometime in September, October, where we would be ideally submitting to the Town of Mintern, so we're not rescinding today to reissue a six-month notice in two months, we're at least looking at several months, six or seven more months before we're six months out.
months out.
Yes. And that's if everything falls into place exactly as it should.
Right. Because I wouldn't want to have them, you know, I'd like to see a nice six-month reprieve from wondering when the next six months is going to start for them, right? And if I'm reading this correctly, they have, let's say, almost a year, but at least eight months bef- before...
Before we would give another notice. Yes.
Right. Just wanted to clarify that.
I moved to rescind the original notice to vacate on June 30th to 2020 and to issue a new notice when the district is within six to nine months of development.
A second.
Excellent. Is there further comments or questions? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you all for being here, being part of the process and we appreciate you staying involved and making sure that the information is flowing both ways as far as your needs and our progress. And so thank you for your patience and perseverance and participation. Happy New Year. We'll talk to you again in six months. And it's a tricky, it's a tricky process, right? The technicalities that we have to go through and we're waiting to make sure that we're doing the right thing and getting the housing survey and the input from the all staff so that we create a housing development that will more than just benefit the people who are living there now. We're going to be able to expand that amazing opportunity of living in Malloy Park to more of our staff. We really want to do the right thing. So I know it's been frustrating with the one step forward and two steps back, but in this case, it's going to give these guys some more time and we're going to ensure that the pro, the development that we come up with is, is going to meet the needs of our employees and maximize the most way, efficient way possible or the best way possible. So we're not creating something that nobody wants and we just appreciate everyone's understanding in that tricky process.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
All right. Oh, so I was like, what's going on? You are back for the Finance Committee, membership changes. And I was like, I thought we just finished. So the goal with the Finance Committee, you can probably say this is, is that we want to have a nice balanced board or committee of five members. Let me, you, you explain it.
Okay. So the Finance Committee is a board-appointed committee and within that, the purpose is really to provide oversight and overlook our financial statements, our audit. They can make recommendations and it's generally made up of only community members, not employees. And then those community members have the ability to also, from their experience, can make recommendations and suggestions about maybe how we can change our operations. A lot of times it's difficult to kind of transition what they would do in their profit type of organizations and translate that into what we do, but we are able at times to take some recommendations from them. This is a board, the appointed committee. And so as the CFO, COO, I really don't have any say in who you choose as a board to appoint to that committee. The really exciting thing about this, and I'm sorry I don't have my notes right in front of me, but we had over 80 applicants through the survey this year, which was tremendous and way more than we've ever had in the past. What was that?
Through the survey?
Right. So instead of just doing like a press release in the paper, we put a, a survey out and sent that out as a way to recruit individuals to apply. So a little different process. We did the same thing with the 3A Committee. It's kind of Dan's idea and a way to actually get a lot more applicants.
So who were the surveys sent to? Everyone?
Yeah, went out to the community and posted on Facebook and...
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Went out very widely.
So one of the questions then at the end was, would you like to serve on the Finance Committee and what are your qualifications? So you got more data than just applicants asking...
So historically, what we did in the press release was ask for people to write a letter stating what their finance experience was and what their interest in serving on the committee was. So the survey was put out in a way, and I guess it's done in a survey format, but it's really if you're interested in being on the Finance Committee, please provide us your name, contact information, what your finance experience is and why you're interested in serving on the committee. And so because we had so many, out of those 81, 84 responses, we had over 30 of them that were actually completed. So you could tell that people went in, started to fill it out and then said, oh, never mind. And so what was requested this year was that, that I go ahead and go through those 30-plus applicants and narrow it down to the individuals with the most finance experience. And so what was submitted to the board was seven of them, but we narrowed that down to six because one of them actually was an employee. And so through those six individuals, we're asking the board to review them and make a recommendation out of the six to appoint three of them to the committee. And one of the reasons that I'm not really involved in that process is because you don't want me to stack the deck. We want people to be able to kind of evaluate and provide oversight and not somebody that would, I could coerce in any way. So I'm going to kind of step back and let you guys talk and appoint the three, top three that you want.
So the ones that asked to stay on it are on, so we have just three additional spaces?
Yes. And the two that are reappointed, that was actually approved in a prior meeting when we went through the process of asking for the renewal, to go out and seek applicants for the open positions. And one of the reasons that we kept the two on there for the appointment is for that historic piece of that and to roll in. So as these two will roll off in one year, then the other three applicants will stay on for an additional year and then we'll seek another two applicants in the next year.
So didn't we have a lot of issues of people dropping off and not completing their... So is there, didn't we have some where we kind of kept them in the wings and when we needed somebody, they bumped up?
Yeah. So the Finance Committee where John Evans and Martin were ones that had applied before and so they automatically kind of became the next person or people to come into that position. The Finance Committee, I would say, is more stable in the membership than the 3A Committee. So that's one benefit. We've also had a turnover of the board members attending those two, so we're looking forward to having you guys on the Finance Committee too.
I mean, this is hard because the information is pretty limited.
Uh huh. So even historically, that's all we received was a letter from a community member that just stated their...
Yeah, but we had two people to choose from and we needed two to fill two spots. I mean, it's just hard because I feel like a lot of them, their experience is somewhat similar.
And, you know... And I can tell you that the, the two individuals that we have on there have actually been very engaged and involved and even though it's been somewhat of a challenge to provide additional information and get them stuff, it's, it's nice to have somebody really truly engaged in looking at the financials.
Well, I think it was incredibly grateful to be able to get bios from John and Martin just to learn a little bit more about their backgrounds and professional experience that they might bring to this role. That helped me, especially like Shelley said, with such limited information from the other applicants to look through and see, well, thank you very much, Sandy, for doing the hard work of narrowing down that big pool to the top six or seven. They all have great experiences, but when I was looking through, I tried to look for maybe some unique experiences or backgrounds. So I guess I'll just start in with my synthesis. So looking at John, you know, he comes from kind of the world of, of corporate finance, big business, whereas Martin knows a little bit more about wealth management and investments. In looking through the other recommendations, the couple that stood out to me were Ursula having some longevity in the community from a local government standpoint and a, and a pretty high role there. Eric, kind of from the healthcare but financial aspect there. And then James, you know, currently with the Water District, but also having worked in kind of corporate banking for a while. It seems like, and again, it was really tough to narrow down from the great pool that you already started narrowing down, that that group might each bring really great experience in, in finance and accounting, but kind of slightly different perspectives as far as scales of systems they've worked with and supported and just slightly different angles of expertise.
It's actually funny because I'm sitting here and I looked over at Michelle's and I was like, oh, that's so funny of the exact same three that I had written down a bit earlier. But I really liked James. I thought he had a lot of experience. I liked that he has some experience in the nonprofit world and I liked that, you know, he's passionate about public education. He thinks it's the most important thing. So it leads me to believe that he'll be making choices based on students and what's best for students. I liked Eric because he has a lot of experience and because Colorado Medical, I'm sure, is a fairly large budget into whatever you call it, medical industry. And I like that he has kids in the district. So Eric was on my list. And then again Ursula, because she has great experience, because she wants to give back to the community and because I think her experience with Eagle County will benefit us. So it's funny that I looked over and we had the same three. I don't know where everybody else stands, but...
Well, and I just want to take a step back and thank everybody that started and those, especially that completed this process. To have that deep of an applicant pool of folks that want to give back and get involved in this way is really amazing. So what a, what a grateful place we get to start from.
I have to say, it was really hard to go through those because I started doing the same thing and trying to analyze who would be a good fit. And then I had to step back and say, I really just need to look at the level of experience and the years of experience so that I wasn't being partial in any way to that. So it's, it's hard.
The only other one that kind of rose to the top for me was Robert Rothenberg. You know, again, similar kind of finance background and strategy work and I don't know.
I would have to agree that it's, it's very difficult to make this type of decisions or just kind of based off a name and briefly that. But the, there are three names that just kind of stood out for me and again, I can't say enough just because I'm basically just basing off on what I'm reading and basically a hunch, so to speak. But the three that stood out for me is Stevie, and apologize if I don't pronounce the last name correctly, Ursula Hayden and then Megan Colby. Those are the three that I personally don't know. I don't think I know any of them at all, just based off of, of this.
I mean, do we care about geographic diversity, like where they live? And do we know where the two that are already on it live? Just so we have sort of some up-valley and some down-valley representation or do we not care or...
For the Finance Committee, that wasn't one of the deciding factors. For the 3A Committee, it was very clearly spelled out to segregate that based on geographic area. But I did include that in the information that was shared with you so that you could kind of analyze where that was if you wanted to take that into consideration. And I apologize, I do not know exactly where John or Martin are, but I do believe that it's up-valley somewhere.
Martin lives in Edwards and John, I could not get that information from his letter.
Kids, I went to Battle Mountain still.
So probably they're both probably mid-valley.
Both have a mailing address of Edwards.
For, I'm sorry. For me, the ones that stood up is Ursula Hayden, Eric, and then Megan, just because I think there should be some women on the committee, so.
I have nothing further to add.
The short tally here and there's two comments for James, three for Eric, four for Ursula, one for Steve, one for Robert, two for Megan. It's not, it's not everybody weighing in. That's not necessarily a scientific straw poll, but I would have, my names would have been for James O. Wilkins and probably Megan and Ursula if I had to come down. It's, again, we're, I'll echo what Michelle said, we're just blessed to have such highly qualified people in our community stepping up to want to help us and work through this. So there's no disrespect to any of the people who've submitted their applications, even if you're not one of these top six. We appreciate it very much, the support and willingness to participate. Let me see if I can get all the names right. Let me check this motion here too. All right. I'll move to appoint James O. Wilkins, Megan Colby, and Ursula Hayden to the Finance Committee and reappoint John Evans and Martin Devorkin to the Finance Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments or questions?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy, for all your hard work. All right. So in terms of governance policies, if you're looking at the agenda, we've got lots of governance policies listed on here and I was impressed with the long lists that were on the administrative content, which everyone might not have seen for Katie Jarno's presentation on the Career Wise there. There's, there's governance policies tied to all of this work. Does anyone feel the meeting advances goals and mission of the district? I'm pleased we were able to resolve the Malloy Park situation, at least for the, for the present. And we did a lot of nice work. I appreciate everybody taking up my slack this morning, listening to the final four school improvement plans, presentations from the schools. The work that gets done in the schools at all levels is really quite remarkable and we appreciate the principals taking their time out to come here and bringing the board up to speed on all of that and where we're going with working to improve every day on the services we provide to children. And do we impact student learning? I hope so every day, right? So what we are going to do now is the board has an executive session, so we will dismiss everybody else and we'll get this room cleaned up and we're going to, just we'll take a five-minute break while we move across the hall and hopefully we'll get our last little piece done before too late. But, so I thank you all for joining us and then we are journeying into...
Do you want to go ahead and read the motion and I'll take the vote?
Oh, all right. Then we can, you betcha.
Thank you.
Let me go back here. So Adam, "I will move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to CRS 2464024B for the purposes of consulting with our attorney as to the duties and responsibilities as a charter authorizer." Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Dr. Long? As, Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.